Good evening, welcome. The January ninth school board meeting is called to order. Will you please join me for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is the flag around the corner over there? Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Paul. Mrs. Bressia. Mrs. Island. And Mrs. Blen, Ms. Blen.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Yes ma'am, under action agenda, we will be adding old business city funding for teacher compensation.
Thank you. Can I get an approval for the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Mrs. Vice Chair Stevens, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next up is our superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford?
Thank you Chair Seberg, good evening other members of the board, and good evening to everyone that has joined us on this rainy night. Thank you so much for pressing your way out to celebrate with us during our superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Before I begin, I would like to welcome everybody back. Happy 2024, happy new year. We also would like to give a shout out to so many of our partners, our staff members, who helped us during the holidays by providing gifts for so many of our families. They had such a great turnout for that, and so we just want to say thank you to everyone that participated in that. Also, next week is the Virginia School Boards Association's Principal Appreciation Week, January fourteenth through the twentieth, so please remember to send well wishes and encouragement to our principals at all of our schools for all the great work that they are doing. At this time, I have a few spotlights that we'd like to share tonight. We'd like to begin with our Manassas City Public Schools Holiday Card Design Winner. Each year, the school board, through the fine arts departments, solicits art submissions for the official holiday card for the division. We always receive so many beautiful entries, making it very hard to narrow down to just one. So tonight, we'd like to extend congratulations to Asita Kante, a fourth grader at Round Elementary School. Asita is in Ms. Molly Lane's art class. I'm going to ask Ms. Lane to come on up too. Come on. Yes. And I actually think her principal is here. Andrew Wilson, her principal is here as well. I'm going to ask Mr. Wilson to come on up and join us. You can see Asita's beautiful artwork on the screen here. Some beautiful birds, and so we just want to say thank you so much for contributing to our holiday spirit. Look at that, it's happy holidays, Manassas City Public Schools. What a great representation for the school board. Thank you so much. Congratulations, thank you Asita. I will have a little bit of help for our next presentation. The Mets Middle School All District Band Recognition, and Mr. Bill Stevens is here to assist with that.
All right, this is always exciting for me. Excuse my voice. Today, we'd like to recognize four amazing students, and they auditioned for all district honor band. This is a top tier group in the Prince William, Manassas City, and Manassas Park area, where these students audition with audition music. They have to audition with scales and sight reading. And we don't have a ton, we have about four kids that made it. However, these kids did it in class, and you'll see why in a second. So as you get called, please come on in. Our first student is not here tonight. His name is Mr. Mark Hayden, Hayden, so Hayden, Hayden, there you go, Mark Hayden. And he made fourth chair French horn in the region. Then we have, yep. Then over here, they love it when I talk about them. We have our very first tuba. Not first tuba, make it, our first, she made first tuba in the entire band. Ayana Mans, please come on up. This is pretty exciting too, because I'm a trombone player. We had a trombone player make second, second trombone in this prestigious group. Kevin Martinez, come on up. And once again, we got another first, which is pretty, pretty awesome. So Jude Lopez made first tenor sax in the all district honor band.
And congratulations to Mr. Stevens and all of our students. All right, congratulations, everybody, thank you. Very good. Thank you for being here. Well, our school board likes to recognize our Apple and Pear Award winners periodically throughout the school year. And our Apple Award recipients are those who are licensed personnel in our schools, and our Pear Award winners are those who are support employees who help us behind the scenes often. Tonight, we're going to begin with our Apple Award recipients from each location. From Baldwin Elementary School, welcome Monica Akari. Monica Akari joined the Baldwin Elementary kindergarten team when the world turned upside down with COVID, but she has never let that affect her teaching. Her students always feel loved and safe in her classroom, and she motivates them to work above grade level. She is always willing to pitch in and offer new ideas to her team. Baldwin is very lucky to have her, congratulations. From Jenny Dean Elementary School, Alex Nicholas. Alex Nicholas is a very hardworking third grade teacher at Dean. He goes above and beyond for his students and even provides personal pictures for their birthdays. They respect him and love him for all he does. He's always willing to help and is a great mentor. He's a wonderful asset to Jenny Dean, congratulations to you. And from Hayden Elementary School, we have Sylvia Shriver. Sylvia Shriver is an expert as Hayden's ESOL teacher. She is always willing to help her students improve their language. Ms. Shriver connects well with her team and positively collaborates with general education and the special education department. Hayden is very fortunate to have her, and congratulations to you, Ms. Shriver. From Round Elementary School, Tina Bachelor. Tina Bachelor is a third grade teacher at Round, who works incredibly hard and cares deeply about each one of her students. She is always a great teammate and is always one of the first to help whenever needed. Round is fortunate to have such a fantastic teacher, congratulations. From Williams Elementary School, we have Amanda Bogel. She's also a third grade teacher over at Williams, and she demonstrates a drive that sets a standard for beginning teachers. It is illustrated by the positive classroom community that she has established for every student who enters her class. The staff at Williams are honored to work alongside someone who embodies the words professional and educator the way Ms. Bogel does. Congratulations, thank you. From Baldwin Intermediate School, Sophie Jabose. Mr. Jabose, who is a fifth grade teacher, is in her first year with Baldwin Intermediate, but you would never know it when you observe the amount of skills she brings to her practice. Mr. Jabose works hard to ensure that she has all the knowledge and resources she needs to do the best for her students. She deserves to be recognized as she is rocking her first year teaching, congratulations. And from Mayfield Intermediate School, Kim Blacy. I don't think she could be here tonight, but congratulations for making fifth grade math and science fun for her students. And from Osborne High School, we have Cherish Skinker. Ms. Skinker is Osborne's on-time graduation coordinator. She is a great mentor to many and an all-around supportive person. She's always helping admin teachers, counselors, and support staff, as well as many students who communicate with her on a daily basis. She encompasses all that a leader and role model should be. She is a great asset to Osborne and all of the families they serve. Congratulations, Ms. Skinker. And these are all of... Those are all of our Apple Award winners for tonight, so we're going to go ahead and get a picture. All right, congratulations, everybody, thank you so much. Thank you. And remember, all of these great staff members are nominated by their peers, so it was an honor for them to be recognized. Next, we have our Pear Award recipients, and we'll start with Baldwin Elementary School, Myra Hackett. Myra Hackett is a kindergarten IA at Baldwin Elementary. She is a hard worker and wants nothing but the best for her students. She goes above and beyond for her students, past and present, and truly cares for them, and they know it. Baldwin is lucky to have such a dedicated and loving employee as part of their staff. Congratulations, Ms. Hackett. From Jenny Dean Elementary School, Lisa Thomas. Lisa Thomas is so much more than a classroom facilitator at Dean. She performs many of the same duties as the third grade teachers. If the virtual teacher is out or there are technical difficulties, she finds lessons for her class on the fly. She is loved and respected by her students. She is loving and caring, and it shows every day. She is a valuable asset to the third grade team at Dean, congratulations. Hayden Elementary School, we have Pam Hathcock. Pam Hathcock is a special education IA at Hayden. She is patient and kind with her students. She cares deeply for her students and shows her compassion through the thousands of acts of kindness each day that support student and teacher success. Hayden says they are very thankful to have her there, congratulations. Round Elementary School, Jocelyn Rains. Couldn't be here tonight, so she is a third grade teacher associate at Round, and we congratulate her in her absence. From Williams Elementary School, Jordan Leek. And Jordan is also a fourth grade classroom facilitator at Williams, and we congratulate him. From Baldwin Intermediate School, Latoria Jennings. Latoria Jennings joined Baldwin Intermediate this year as the social worker. She has been an active member of the attendance team, supporting students arriving to school each day and on time. She has collaborated with the administrative and counseling teams to support students and families with needs they may have, and does home visits as needed. She is a huge asset to Baldwin, congratulations, Ms. Jennings. From Mayfield Intermediate School, Angel Iglesias. Angel Iglesias is a permanent substitute at Mayfield. He is hardworking, thorough, and thoughtful. When you leave him subplans, he always follows them exactly and ensures that the children are working. Always has a smile and warm greeting. He is an example of goodness, happiness, inclusiveness, and positivity. Thank you, Mr. Iglesias, for all you do. Osborne High School, Dwayne Davis. Mr. Davis is Osborne's cafeteria manager, so we congratulate him on doing an amazing job at Osborne. From Food Services, Marvin Ramirez. Looks like Mr. Ramirez couldn't be here tonight. He is the culinary operations specialist for the school division. From Transportation, Joseph Diaz. Joseph Diaz is a bus driver for our transportation department. He is dependable, trustworthy, organized, and hardworking with a positive attitude. He has been with Manassas City Public Schools for two years and has a great relationship with the students and his coworkers. When you see him, you are guaranteed to receive a pleasant greeting and a big smile. The transportation department is better because Mr. Diaz is a part of it, congratulations. And these are all of our Pear Award winners for tonight, congratulations to all of you. Congratulations, everybody, thank you. And thank you all for your patience, this is a meaningful moment for our families, we appreciate that. Well, new this year, the Super Sub Award celebrates the invaluable contributions of substitutes in various roles across the division, including custodians, instructional assistants, clerical staff, bus drivers, attendants, school food service personnel, teachers, counselors, and nurses. Nominees for the Super Sub Award are individuals who fulfill their substitute duties seamlessly and engage positively with staff and students. This recognition aims to appreciate their dedication and excellence in creating a positive educational environment. Each person was nominated by a location they've served. Tonight, we'll begin with Hayden Elementary School, Becky Thompson. Becky Thompson goes above and beyond in whatever she's working on. During National Young Readers Day, Ms. Thompson was substituting for a class in the afternoon when a teacher informed her of what she was going to wear for the day. Ms. Thompson decided to join in the celebration and motivate the students by wearing the same outfit. Her dedication and enthusiasm for her work are greatly appreciated by the staff and students at Hayden Elementary. Congratulations and thank you. From Jenny Dean and Round Elementary Schools, Gail Robinson. I would like to note that Ms. Robinson was nominated by two schools for the excellent work that she's been doing as a substitute, so congratulations to her. From Williams Elementary School, Ivy Rice. Ivy Rice has been a long-term substitute at Williams since November. Her calm demeanor and steady guidance have helped their students focus on their learning while their teacher has been out. Ms. Rice works well with the grade-level team she's working with, has high expectations for her students, and has a passion for teaching. She is committed to excellence in her work, and Williams truly appreciates having her in their school. Congratulations, Ms. Rice. And from Mayfield Intermediate School, Carson Webb. Okay, Ms. Webb has been subbing at Mayfield for about a year now, so they wanted to make sure that they recognized the great work that she's been doing. And from Osborne High School, last but not least, Reggie Moore. Reggie Moore is an exceptional substitute, and Osborne wishes to recognize her efforts. Ms. Moore is a retired teacher from MCPS, who still holds a great love for the schools and our teachers. She can be relied upon to assist in any classroom she is placed in, serving as both a long-term sub and daily substitute. The relationships she establishes with her colleagues and students are genuine and long-lasting. She is an invaluable asset to everyone, congratulations, Ms. Moore. We could not survive without our subs, so thank you all so much for everything that you do for us, really, thank you so much. Okay, thank you all and congratulations on the recognition. This concludes our spotlights for tonight, Chair Seberg, thank you.
Next up on our agenda is board committee reports, but we have no committee report since our last regular business meeting. Follow that up with citizens' comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here, and we treat citizens' comments as a public hearing. We do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of concern or interest. Please be respectful when presenting your comments, and signed up, I have Reggie Moore.
Hi, everyone, superintendent, school board members. This is where I started my career, Jenny Dean Middle School, in 1977, as a first-year teacher in a brand-new school system. It's nice to be in the building where I started, brings back a lot of memories. I had thirty-two wonderful years as a full-time teacher. We moved from here to Mets in 1990, and then I spent the last fifteen years substitute teaching and getting kidded a lot about it, but my heart is right here with all of you in Manassas community. This is the best, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Is there anybody else that wished to speak in citizens' comments this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I will move on to our consent agenda, may I have a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks of the school board of the city of Manassas, approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Tonight on our discussion agenda, we have K six literacy resource adoption. Mr. Craig Gufeiler, Executive Director of Student Achievement, and Dr. Ed Stevenson will provide information on the K six literacy resource adoption.
Good evening Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, and members of the board. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Ed Stevenson, who's going to talk about the K six literacy resource adoption in the Virginia Literacy Act that we have previously talked about here at a previous meeting. But before I do that, I do want to just recognize Laura Emdin. Laura Emdin is a member of our team. She is the pre-K through six literacy coordinator in the Office of Student Achievement, and she has led this initiative, and we wouldn't be here with this resource adoption process without her leadership. The VDOE, of course, gave us, had given us a very short timeline, and what has been accomplished with a committee of teachers and without her leadership, we would not be here. So I just want to take a minute to recognize her before I turn it over to Dr. Ed Stevenson.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the school board, and Dr. Newman. I am pleased to have the opportunity to present our recommendation for the adoption of a core literacy resource for our elementary and... for the adoption of a core literacy resource for our elementary and intermediate schools. Tonight's presentation will include a review of our modified selection timeline, our process for gathering feedback and reviewing materials, and our core literacy resource recommendation rationale and next steps. Here, we have a complete summary of our condensed timeline. This differs slightly from what we presented in September due to further developments that occurred as the process unfolded. Changes include the addition of vendor presentations for committee members and key stakeholders, and the addition of review opportunities for fourth through sixth-grade program materials. This slide summarizes the feedback and evaluation portion of the adoption process in more detail. We formed a committee of educators with experience and expertise in effective elementary reading instruction. They reviewed the resources and provided feedback, which we used to select two for more extensive evaluation, HMH into reading and Benchmark Advance. During this time, the state expanded their list of approved resources to grades K through five. In response, we provided opportunities for school staff in grades four through six to review and provide feedback on the relevant materials for their grade levels. We also set up and recorded live vendor presentations and made the K through six program resources available for public review over a four-week period. We also asked representatives from central office departments that work with reading instruction to review and provide feedback on the resources. After a thorough review that provided significant opportunities for stakeholder feedback, one resource emerged as the best one to meet our needs, and that would be Benchmark Advance. Before I summarize the reasons for our recommendation, I want to stress that all of the resources we evaluated meet the requirements of the VLA and address the key priorities I am about to discuss. But the feedback we received from the committee, teachers, administrators, and the public notably and consistently identified Benchmark Advance as the resource that most thoroughly addresses all of these areas. And these areas include alignment with the Manassas City Public Schools Strategic Plan and support for a cycle that works, extensive layered scaffolding for English learners, a deep focus on the same foundational literacy skills that key MCPS training investments like letters and IMSE have provided for our teachers, seamless integration of standards-based science and social studies content, and extensive resources for all students to access learning opportunities regardless of their need or prior knowledge. Benchmark Advance meets MCPS strategic priorities. It does this through a focus on grade-level learning, regular and accurate assessment as a tool to drive instruction, extensive support for differentiation and accommodation of diverse learner needs, and its use of tiered support plans to close learning gaps. Benchmark Advance also fully aligns with the requirements of the VLA that will be in place this fall. It is an evidence-based literacy resource that is grounded in scientific reading research. It has also received some of the highest ratings that the Virginia Literacy Project has awarded to resources to date. Benchmark Advance pairs nicely with a cycle that works by providing resources for unpacking standards and creating relevant and student-friendly language objectives and learning goals, giving daily and weekly checkpoints for teachers to use data to drive instruction, aligning program content with upcoming Virginia Language Arts standards. And I will add here that Benchmark has confirmed that they will provide Virginia School Divisions that adopt their resource with a document to align it with newly English Language Arts standards once they are approved by the state. They also provide and support the planning of text sets in a way that allows teams to focus on the individual needs of students. Benchmark Advance is also the best choice for MCPS because of its extensive support for the needs of English learners. It features multiple levels of specific support for these students in every lesson. It also provides contrastive analysis charts that show how English compares to nine other languages in terms of their sounds and letters, as well as their grammar and syntax. Benchmark uses a knowledge-based approach to literacy learning and development. The program uses text sets that allow students to dig deeper into content area knowledge and build vocabulary consistently over time. The resource features science and social studies units that align across grade levels and build on concepts each year. Text sets allow students to build their reading skills in a variety of formats, to include whole-class read-alouds, close readings, small-group readings, and readers theater. Benchmark's program aligns research, theory, and professional learning into instructional practice around phonemic awareness and phonics. This dovetails nicely with the letters and IMSE training that teachers have already received in a way that bridges the two and provides an explicit and systemic approach to teaching and learning foundational skills. This slide provides an example of how Benchmark uses five-day lesson cycles to achieve this. Benchmark also provides extensive resources for supporting the learning needs of our special education students. They provide suggestions and conversation points for teachers and teams to use to support these students in their daily instructional tasks. The program also comes packaged with an array of accessibility tools to include audio and visual supports, typed responses, and closed captioning. So, what are the next steps in the process? This recommendation will be on the agenda of the January 23rd School Board Meeting. Once we have an approved resource, we will purchase it and work with the vendor on providing professional learning to key educator groups in the spring, summer, and fall ahead of full implementation of the resource next school year. Preparing our schools for implementation of the VLA will be a major focus of the Student Achievement Department's work over the next seven months, and it will represent the beginning of a multi-year effort to meet state requirements to comprehensively train all K through eight teachers in effective literacy instruction. In closing, I want to emphasize that we have been able to complete a thorough review of literacy resources for implementation next year that has accurately assessed resources in the context of our strategic priorities, practice, and student needs, and provided significant opportunities for stakeholder feedback. We recommend that the School Board approve the adoption of Benchmark Advance as it represents the state-approved resource that best aligns with our ongoing efforts to meet the foundational literacy needs of students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stevenson. Questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for the presentation. I look forward to seeing this roll out in the schools. We appreciate all the work of all of you and your team.
Mrs. Williams?
And I have to repeat the same thing. Thank you so much for your thorough presentation, Dr. Stevens. And Ms. Emden, thank you for all your hard work. As he said, it was a short timeline, so I appreciate everything you all have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any others? Mrs. Breschow?
I will be the third person to thank the Student Achievement Office. I know you guys probably started this school year with a different set of goals and agendas, and it's always tough to drop everything and have to do something else and to do something so intense and over something that should be a long timeline and a short timeline. That's a challenge that can't be understated, and I'm very grateful to you for doing that. Just for my own curiosity, how long does this process usually take?
Over a year.
Over a year.
Yes.
Yes, so that is, going back to Slide Three, a real serious compression you guys had to deal with. And I'm very impressed with your ability to do that. Another thought that occurred to me as you were speaking, Scholastic, we are replacing Scholastic. Benchmark Advance will replace Scholastic.
As the core resource.
As the core, and Scholastic will stay onboard as a tertiary resource, but this is, we're swapping these. Was Benchmark Advance evaluated during that Scholastic process? Do we know?
I would have to go back and check that for certain. I know there were a number of the same publishers that commonly create these resources back in 2020, but I will tell you that all the publishers, what they are currently producing looks a lot different than it did back then. And so, because they really reflect the changes that we've seen in laws and policy across the country around science of reading.
And what are the ways that this differs from Scholastic, the major ways?
The biggest way is in, and the major way is in, the use of explicit instruction, explicit phonics instruction to address foundational literacy skills.
And this one addresses those?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. I see there were a few bullet points, and you discussed a little bit the feedback process. Was there anything notable in that feedback process you'd like to highlight?
Really, just that it really, the feedback emerged around the Benchmark program, and there was a lot of feedback about how especially the supports for students really line up well with what we need for our students here in this division.
All right. Well, thank you very much. That's all. All from me. Thank you.
Mrs. Spall?
Hi. Thank you so much for the detailed review. I just know anecdotally, when my kids were in school, you know, there tended to be a lot of talk where we're adopting a different resource, you know, we're throwing the old thing out, we're bringing new things in, I don't understand why. And I don't mean to say that in a sing-songy way or to belittle it, but I just want to make sure that, you know, it looks like we use some focus groups and all that, but as this actually is adopted and rolled out, making sure that teachers are very clear on why, you know, this wasn't our first choice. This is something that we had to do. It looks to be a much better program, you know, but it's still, there's a lot of people that talk about how expensive it is to do that, and what do they do with the old books? And, you know, this is progress, and we should stand behind it. And we definitely, it's something I think we can be very proud of, but just making sure that there's a plan in place to make sure that every teacher that's, you know, watching out with the old and in with the new understands where we are and why it really needed to happen. Just make sure that, you know, we're not leaving any stone unturned in terms of why it's better and why we had to do it. But thank you very much. It's very exciting, actually.
Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. I just had a couple real quick questions. You mentioned Benchmark Advance ranked quite high. How did HMH pair up in the rankings?
You mean in our feedback? Or you mean in the state?
In the state.
Their rankings were also very high. I think the final set of ratings I looked at had Benchmark slightly higher in key categories, but HMH is also a very highly regarded and heavily-used resource.
Okay. And my next question for you, I noticed, and it's on, oh, this slide doesn't have a number in it. Benchwork, Benchmark's knowledge-based framework, where you talk about vertically-aligned unit and topic texts. And I know that in the science of reading, we really focus a lot on nonfiction. Do we know if Benchmark aligns with social studies curriculum and the science curriculum? Because we know science and social studies use academic vocabulary, and that's something our students really, students in general, struggle with. So do they pair up well together?
Yeah, they do. Actually, that was one of the great strengths of this program, is it's very well-aligned with our standards of learning in those topics. They don't just provide topical readings. They provide readings that actually align with the actual standards we want the students to learn. And there are a lot of nonfiction resources as part of that.
Well, the teacher hat on me says that's really great because of that whole cross-curricular, and really giving our kids that immersion into that vocabulary in more than one setting helps them generalize it across settings. So I think that's really great. Now, you mentioned how Benchmark Advance matches up with IMSE. Can you explain that a little bit? I lost part of it there.
So IMSE is very focused on foundational literacy skills, on phonics instruction, building phonetic and phonological awareness. And Benchmark very heavily focuses on providing, as part of the literacy block, explicit and direct instruction in those areas where they're needed. So there's a lot of alignment there, a lot of commonality there.
Okay, well, thank you. Those were my only questions. I appreciate all the hard work you've done. I'm sure this has been quite a challenge. And looking at different programs that are very similar and trying to decide which is best for our population is a difficult task. So thank you for the work you've done. We appreciate it.
Dr. Stevenson, one last question. I received an email from a parent this week that was concerned over the use of video in teaching children academics. And I just wanted to ask you, since this is fresh in my mind, does Benchmark Advance use video? Is there supplemental video? And in what ways video would be used to teach children?
There are some, a very small number of video resources, but they're really only intended to provide vacuum knowledge or introduce units and new concepts, and they're two minutes or less each. It should be an extremely small part of any instruction that happens under this resource.
Well, very good. Thank you so much for answering all our questions, and we look forward to seeing it on the next meeting. Thank you. Next up on our agenda in the area of Finance and Operations is we need to discuss changes to our two previously-approved calendars, the 2025 Budget Development Calendar and also the Regular Business Meeting Calendar. Due to the closing of the Division on March 5th for the Presidential Primary, the Board will need to discuss a replacement date for that. And I believe the date is February 29th that we're considering? And in addition, our Regular Business Meeting in March, we have a week at the end of March that is spring break, which we're closed for. So we're trying, we have our last few budget work sessions and our last few meetings. We need to make sure that we have a business meeting to have our public hearing. So I believe that that's been suggested to be on the 21st here at Dean. February 21st, March 21st here at Dean, and that is our public hearing? It's a regular business meeting to approve the budget, and it'll be on a Thursday here at Dean. The 21st is a Thursday. We need a motion and... Do we want to what? Oh, well, we can wait till the next meeting to approve it. We have time, right? Okay. So please consider that, and it'll be on our next agenda. Okay, up next on our action agenda is city funding for teacher compensation. School Board will discuss and approve the Joint Compensation Task Force Recommendation for Teacher Compensation, and I want to just read a little something here. What we have before us tonight on the action agenda is some unfinished business with regard to city funding for teacher compensation. I would like to thank the members of the Manassas City Public Schools Employee Compensation Committee consisting of Vice Chair Stevens, Mrs. Williams, and Dr. Newman, along with supporting staff. I thank you for serving on this committee. I'd also like to thank Council members Vasquez Luna and Mrs. Sabeski for serving, as well as City Council, city staff, and the mayor for calling the committee together and for bringing this opportunity forward with the intent to help Manassas City Public Schools begin a process to improve employee compensation issues. I think it's important to revisit the work of the Employee Compensation Committee and their recommendation to us, and for that, I will go to Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you, Chair. Since last summer, the Compensation Committee was developed. We have met several times to discuss multiple facets of compensation, the biggest being how we are going to address compensation over the next several years and developing a plan to bring compensation at this exact moment specifically for teachers more in line with our surrounding school divisions. We've had several meetings with a lot of very good, strong discussion. The School Board met January 2nd for a work session where we had robust discussion to talk about what we were going to do, what works best for our school division. The Compensation Committee had three options in front of, we were tasked with, first, with determining what to do with the $1.5 million that City Council was going to appropriate towards us, to us. We had three options. One was to address, to provide those funds for teacher, to staff on the teacher scale. The second one was to address the capped steps. The second one was to address the capped steps. The third was to address the unified scale. The Compensation Committee determined that addressing the capped steps would be most appropriate for the $1.5 million. It would impact 76 teachers. The remaining funds of the $1.5 million, which was a little bit over $500,000, would go towards a 1% raise to all teachers on the teacher's scale. The $1.5 million would have covered approximately 75% of that. The school division had plans to make up for the remaining 25%. Since our January 2nd meeting, a number of things have come to light. And I do believe Dr. Newman is going to share that information.
And I'll first ask Ms. Williams, did you have anything to add to that? I know you served on the committee too, so.
Nothing additional.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Newman?
I feel I need to, one, thank Ms. Wingfield, Mr. Hawkins, Casada, Gaffeler. Am I missing anybody? Lee? For all the work that you guys have put in stopping what you were doing for this current budget to investigate what I'm getting ready to share. What we found, when people ask, what is the history of our cap position? Well, going through the paper, and I literally mean paper, to try to find some of this in the history. We found that in school year 2012, 2013, incoming teachers were capped at year 10. School year 13, 14, that number moved to 15, which means any teacher coming in with more experience than that were placed at step 15. For school year 1920, the school board approved a placement guide that we have now. That placement guide has three years that are the same step. And that was due to two years of salaries and steps being frozen around 2009, 2010, maybe 2011. Two of those years. When the board made the decision to go to a placement guide to, we can try to entice veteran teachers to come to Manassas, this is a decision that we made. I think it was a good decision. I think the problem that we found, which I'm getting ready to tell you about, proves that we were able to entice 71 teachers that came to us with more than 20 years of experience that would not have come to us before because they would have been capped at year 15. So one of the charges after the last work session was for us to determine what is the exact number? What is the funding amount? And we were to report that back to the board. During our first meeting, Mr. Hawkins asked us a question that none of us saw coming. And it was right in front of our face. And it was, you know that we do not have a true one-for-one. And you have more than these 76 that have lost a step. So Ms. Wingfield and her staff went down, went through all the files of everyone who came in, starting with the 1920 school year. And they located 71 teachers that were above step 20 that lost at least one step. If you look at the resolution that was approved by the city council, it states that they want to correct all step, steps that are not correct to make teachers whole. So we thought it was important to let the school board know that you don't have a 76 teacher issue. You have an additional 71 that have also lost steps due to the placement guide. I, I feel I need to say this because some of the comments that have been made about we don't care about teachers and why would we do this to teachers. There's 132 school divisions outside of Manassas City. And I'm willing to bet that every one of them have a placement guide. At our work session, we shared with you Prince William's placement guide, which teachers are capped at different places on their scale. So I don't want anyone to think that we have done something to our teachers that is unethical or unfair. Also during the work session, we were charged with determining what would it cost to provide a 1% raise on top of the 3%. I feel a need to say this as well. I feel that this board, the board that I love, the board I love working with, I felt that the resolution shortchanged you a little because it claimed that it was adding to the raise that was given by the state of 3%. And that is false. The state gave 2%. This board made a way to give the additional 1. And I feel it's only right to put it on record that this school board found the funds to give the additional 1%. It was not a 3% from the state. The 1% for just teachers, which we had to go through and take people off of the teacher's scale that some did not believe are teachers. And I'm going to say some because I don't believe that way of thinking. I think we have a strategic plan that says all of our employees are educators. So, but that was not our assignment. Our assignment was to take the teachers out. In order to give that raise, it's going to cost approximately $588,068. So we were able to provide that number to the board. The additional funds it would take for one year for the newly found 71 teachers is $195,406.72. The 76, we do need to explain that. We went through and made sure that that was correct. When this process first started, we were not under the impression that this step correction would take place during this physical year. So we removed everyone that was on step 29 and step 30 from the list because if you would do it next year, they would all be on step 30. And that is the highest that we have. So we have since put two individuals that were on step 29. We added them to the 76 that you knew about. And after careful review of the 76, we noticed that we just had a retirement in our last school board meeting. And that person was on the list. So that 76 went to 75. But once you add the two for 29, that's 77, plus the new 71. And that is where we're at tonight.
Discussion from the board. Oh, yeah, you can give us the number, 77.
The cost to do the step correction for the 77, when you add the two that are currently on step 29, In the resolution, the school board would be responsible, when you look at it for a year, for anything over the 1.5. And if you add up the 77, the 71, plus the 1%, that's $1,774,801.16. So the school board would have to come up with $274,801.16 for a year. We're in a half a year, so you would only need $137,458. But this is above the 1.5 that you are, that you would be on the hook for, that we would have to locate those dollars in our current budget. Now I'm done.
All right. Might have to come back to you with those numbers, but. Anything, anything? Mrs. Williams?
The only, the one thing I'd like to add is there has been a lot of discovery since just even Friday. So we had a, we had a budget work session January 2nd. And just since Friday, we've had a lot of discovery where we've, this number increases. During our work compensation meeting, we were anticipating the board to, to cover a delta of around $200,000. It was a little less than $200,000. And now if we, if we choose to cover, if we choose to utilize this $1.5 million and go ahead and make not just the 77 hole, but the additional 71 hole, then we have a decision to make if we want to, then we're covering $274,801.16. So it's unfortunate that, that, that we, it takes a long time to, to do this process. And it's just been forced, I don't want to say it that way, but it's been, it's something we need to decide what we, if we want to move forward and, and and vote on this tonight. And, and I believe we need to, I believe we need to vote. But I would like to open up the discussion with everybody else and, and get some more thoughts. A lot of you expressed your thoughts last meeting, which are extremely helpful. And I'd like to hear more since we've had more time to, to discuss and consider what, what was presented to us just over the weekend since Friday.
Mrs. Spall?
I'll be happy to go. I think for me, it's been a very difficult decision. I don't know that it's where I wanted to start with the employee compensation issues. But I think that it, I'm very happy that it accomplished some needed scale corrections. It accomplished some, some more inclusive step decisions. So for me, this is, it's, it's going to be a yes for me. And I do thank, you know, our council and school board members that served on the committee. I don't want to go too far around the room, you know. I mean, Dr. Newman said it well, but I thank the central office staff for what they've done. I thank Dr. Newman for the explanation. I thank Vice Chair for her explanation. I thank you, Suzanne. It's a complex problem, Chair Seberg. It's a very complex problem. And it's not a perfect solution, but it is a step forward. And so I think we can be proud of that. I want to thank the diligence of Mr. Hawkins for bringing up, you know, things that are difficult. I don't know exactly what's going to come in between now and February 1st, but he will be sorely missed. And, you know, what he found and what he brought to the table is so characteristic of exactly who he is. So it didn't make our decision a lot easier, but I do think that it's a, it's a better, it's a better decision because, because he's leading the way in a lot of, in a needed way. So I am a yes. And I thank everyone for their hard work.
Ms. Brish?
Sure. Dr. Newman?
Can I ask you a clarifying question? You said that this addresses the scale issue and, right, but it does not address the scale at all. It only corrects the step of the people that were capped. It does not touch the scale. I just want that to be.
Okay. I may have been mincing words, but what, what you said, it's, it's addressing all of the capped people,
Yes.
which I believe is a necessary step. And it's something that's been uncovered very recently. But it is, it is something that makes a complete package. It, you know, it would be, I think, very bad for us to not address the 71 with the 78. There would be no rhyme or reason to, to try to justify that.
Ms. Brish, do you have comments or questions?
I do. Thank you, Mrs. Spall, for your heartfelt comments there and for everybody's really hard work on this. I am going to say I am a no vote on this. And I want to be very clear that my no vote on this is not a rebuke at all to the tremendous amount of work and investment that has been put into this over the years, not over the years, over the months by, it feels like years. This last week has felt like a year. But over the months by the joint committee members on both sides, both council and school board. And of course, the staff who has been dropping everything to answer our questions and, you know, try to put us in a position to implement this or not, depending on tonight's vote. I do want to note some things that are, just for people who are not hardcore budget, school board budget watchers, what has been unusual about this process. First, that this $1.5 million that we are talking about is a funding increase for the Manassas City schools. Generally, our budget is built, we build in a 3% increase year over year from the city council, our local, local funding body. And this year, they very generously decided to help out our hardworking teachers by giving us an additional $1.5 million. So that was an extremely generous offer for us. And I don't want that to go unacknowledged, both for the scale of that generosity and how unusual and outside the normal process it was. This $1.5 million, not only did they make that commitment to us for this year, but that is part of our budget. We've been told part of our budget going forward. That was part of their resolution. And generally, when we make funding decisions, we do this within a very regimented budget process where we go down the line of this is what our balance sheet looks like. This is where our expenditures are. This is what our requests from the principals were. This is what we're going to fund out of that list and what we don't think we can, and yada, yada, yada. Go, you know, this is what our food service budget is so we can keep kids fed. This is what, you know, it's a very, this is what our benefits are. You know, it's a very all-encompassing process to look at how all of these things interact. And part of my no vote is that this is happening outside of that process. And because this is a commitment forever, we vote yes tonight. We don't know what we're going to find when we go through that budget process. Would we be in favor of this measure if it meant increasing class sizes across the division? You know, there's trade-offs everywhere. And we are kind of entering blind into that. And that is a difficult thing for me to overcome. I also want to talk a little bit about the choice to target the, you know, the capped step teachers. And I also want to be very clear here that what I'm, how, what I'm about to say is not intend, I'm appreciative for everyone. I want to be clear of what my comments are and are not. My comments are not to express any kind of preference for anybody or anything like that. I am very appreciative, and I have some school board member comments planned later, to underscore that this is not about appreciating one group more than the other. This is not a question about giving a raise and not giving a raise. It's just a question of what kind of raise are we going to give? You know, this is not a, you know, I'm not saying that teachers don't deserve raises. Please do not misunderstand me. They do. And in fact, I was an early advocate for this additional funding, and I'm happy to see it come through. I, this is about limited resources and making the best and most impactful decision with those limited resources. And my own priorities, that's the only person I can speak for, are to use those limited resources to target to our greatest vulnerabilities and the points where we are having the greatest trouble. You know, I want to minimize the teacher shortage impact on our kids. I want to minimize our need for virtual teachers. And I actually sent Ms. Garza a visual aid. Can you show the visual aid, please? So this is a, this is, I'm going to explain this concept using this image as a, a kind of a famous image. It's this kind of a famous story. Back in World War II, the Royal Air Force would fly combat missions. And when the airplanes that were able to return, the engineers did an analysis of where those airplanes were getting hit. And the pilots were like, oh, we need more armor on the tip of our wings. We need more armor on our tails. That's where we keep getting hit. We keep getting hit where the red dots are. That's where the strikes are. But the engineers said back to them, the Royal Air Force said, you know, with all due respect and thank you for your service, my job as an engineer is to think about the planes that have not made it back. I need to think about the planes getting hit in the nose and getting hit- I need to think about the planes getting hit in the nose and getting hit down there in the fuselage, getting hit there in the middle of the wings. And there's only so much armor you can put on an airplane before it doesn't, before it stops flying. So that is how I am conceiving the approaching of this problem. And the teachers whose service I appreciate very, very much, who still work for the division, they are the red dots in this story. And I think one thing that we need to keep in mind about the market dynamics as well that was not discussed in the otherwise very thorough preamble that everybody gave is that the Northern Virginia school systems have a sort of level of cooperation regarding the step placement guides. And we are the only division that does not cap entrance to, you know, transfers in. So our teachers at step nineteen are only able to enter Prince William County at step fifteen. And even though, so that does create a market reality that these teachers that we're talking about tonight, the one hundred and forty eight, there is a little bit of a path dependency that they have if they're above that cap step for Prince William County. So for that, so that is another, you know, that is another reason I'd ask us to consider. You know, I've addressed the process outside of our normal budget process. And I, this was alluded to, but I would also like to underscore that we have many other issues along our scale, along our salary scales. And this is why I really hope, would have hoped to put this through the normal process so that we can get a sense of how we can take care of everybody. And maybe not this year. Maybe we could have taken this budget cycle to set some goals for people going forward, knowing now that we have this revenue stream to count on. So I acknowledge that this is not an easy vote for anybody. There are many competing priorities. What I, but one thing I know that we pride ourselves on is making decisions with kids at the center. A high quality workforce is one of the pillars of the strategic plan for a reason. And putting kids through subcontracted virtual classrooms is not the optimal scenario. I think we need to prioritize what will make the most impact on our teacher retention and recruitment, given our limited resources. And I do not believe that this current plan is it. The councils react, there's a lot of anxiety regarding the stability of this funding, that if we vote no tonight, that it might disappear forever. And that anxiety, I acknowledge that's, that is a lot of anxiety. But I really truly believe and very confident that better angels will prevail. I just do not see our city council choosing to essentially defund the Manassas City Public Schools and punish the teachers and punish the kids because of a miscommunication between fourteen elected adults. You know, I really think that we have a way forward together. And that no matter what, no matter what, we need to work on this relationship. And so with that, I know, I will conclude saying, I know that if we give ourselves more time and put this through the normal budget process, that we can get to a better and fairer and more equitable solution. And so I urge my colleagues to vote no with me. Thank you.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your input. For those of you who may not have been along on the whole process, we've had several very in-depth conversations, both the compensation committee and the school board as a whole, most recently when we met for our reorganization meeting, our work session last week on the second. And there have been a number of changes since that date. As the chair of the compensation committee, there were days where it's really felt like we're going one step forward and two steps backwards. Every time we felt like we were moving forward, something else would come along to block our path. But one thing I'm going to make really clear is with the addition of seventy one teachers, a hundred and forty eight teachers represents almost twenty five percent of our teaching staff. That's actually a pretty large portion of our teaching staff that's impacted. This is never going to go away. This is never going to be swept under the rug. There will always be this issue if we don't correct it now. And no matter what we do, if we don't correct it, we will always have some inequity in compensation. In addition, through all of the compensation committee meetings, one thing that has been made very clear to me is we cannot move forward in the discussion on compensation and bringing our teacher compensation in line with surrounding school divisions until a decision is made on the one point five million. The conversation won't continue. And through conversations that I've had, both in compensation committee meetings and in speaking individually to city council members, the reality is, is that if we do not agree to this, we could very easily lose that funding. I don't really have much more to say because sometimes I feel like I've said everything that needs to be said. This has been a very difficult process and we need to come to a decision on it. And whether school board members choose to vote yes or vote no, they're choosing with their conscience. And that's something that I can respect. But we really do need to make a decision tonight and we may need to make a decision that says, how can we move forward? How can we move forward? How can we make everyone whole and bring all of our teaching staff onto a level playing field where they are all equal? Because when we have twenty five percent of our teaching staff who are not whole, then they're all not on an equal playing field. And as a teacher myself, I personally would be very offended to have my school board say to me, yeah, it's okay that you're not even with everyone else. It's okay that you've put in those same number of years, but you're still not equal with everyone else. Will that be the last straw for some of our teachers? I don't know. But we really have to think hard before we make a decision. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mrs. Brooks, did you have something you wanted to say?
I just wanted to add to what everyone else has said. This is a very difficult decision. We would love to give everyone higher compensation across the board. All of our, you know, staff, everyone here is an educator. But ever since I've been on the board, this has been a topic that we've wanted to address, but there never was the funding. And now we've been told, okay, here, now you can fix this problem. As as a teacher in the past, I worked in many different schools, states and districts and I would have been very discouraged if I got to a district and was told, oh, I'm sorry, that experience didn't count because we cap it at, you know, ten, you know, that being the lowest that we've ever capped it at. So I would, you know, I would be really discouraged if I had partial credit for my experience when someone coming in after this cap was lifted now gets full. And, you know, so that's just my opinion on all of it. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
And I'd like to add one more thing. Mrs. Brisha reminded me of this. This particular vote and conversation tonight is not the end. The conversation for employee compensation with the city is going to continue because we want to address all employees. That is the next step. I don't want people to think that we're only addressing this now. We're not going to continue to address everyone's pay. We are, as a, we, along with the city council, we are committed to address all employees' compensation. So I just want to make that clear as well.
Thank you. And I'm gonna, any other discussion? Carl, Mr. Hollingsworth?
This is a very complex decision. I was set to vote no. I'm right in between you two. But the commitment to consistently address this issue moving forward and and the reoccurring commitment from the city council has swayed my vote. I'll be voting yes.
And I'm in favor of moving forward. So with that, do we have a motion to consider?
So Chair, would the motion be to adopt or accept city council resolution? We don't have a specific.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't have the specific numbers before necessarily. Now we do. Hold on just a minute. We're actually writing the resolution, the motion.
And, and one point five recurring?
Yes.
What do we need to say? Additionally. Toward one percent. Do I say raise? Teacher raise? Okay. In case that placement of certified teachers additionally, the school board will contribute the amount of thirty seven thousand four hundred dollars and fifty eight cents toward a one percent pay increase for teachers. Okay. Starting twenty four, twenty five school year. Recurring, starting with twenty, beginning twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year.
Listen to the rain, folks. We all have to leave and walk through this to get to our cars. Just saying.
All right. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas accept the council's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for S Y twenty three, twenty four and one point five million occurring, reoccurring funds beginning twenty four, twenty five school year for the use of teacher compensation towards correcting pay step placement of certified teachers. Additionally, the school board will contribute the amount of one hundred thirty seven thousand four hundred dollars and fifty eight cents towards a one percent pay increase for teachers.
Is that amount right?
Yep.
I have a motion and a second that the school board of the city of Manassas accept the council's seven hundred and fifty thousand for school year twenty three, twenty four and one point five million dollars recurring funds beginning with the twenty four, twenty five school year for the use of teacher compensation toward correcting pay step placement of certified teachers. Additionally, the school board will contribute the amount of one hundred thirty seven thousand four hundred dollars and fifty eight cents toward a one percent pay increase for teachers. Was there any discussion?
You seconded, but you had discussion, right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So just to confirm that Chair or Dr. Newman have spoken with someone on the council side to let them know that there is a difference in staff numbers, although the amount isn't appreciably greater.
I had a conversation with interim city manager Keen.
Okay.
And I did not because I was waiting to discuss it with all of you.
Okay. So will, you already have, is the plan for you to do it soon?
Maybe after a vote, I'll have something to say.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I think it's important that we have given them some warning and thank you for doing that, Dr. Newman, and thank you Suzanne for waiting and being judicious about not knowing the answer. So thanks.
I think it's important to talk to my school board members first before I go talking to city council or mayor.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to repeat the motion. I moved that the school, I have a motion and a second. Vice Chair and Mrs. Brooke Spall, that the school board of the city of Manassas accept the council's seven hundred and fifty thousand for school year twenty three, twenty four and one point five million recurring funds beginning with the twenty four, twenty five school year for the use of teacher compensation toward correcting pay step placement of certified teachers. Additionally, the school board will contribute the amount of one hundred thirty seven thousand four hundred dollars and fifty eight cents toward a one percent pay increase for teachers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just a nay.
Motion carries six one. Brisha opposed. All right, back to our school meeting here. Next up is board member comments. And I will go first to our school student representative, Ms. Ashley Bland.
Good evening. Congratulations to everybody who received awards tonight. What a great accomplishment. I have a quick reminder that this weekend is a four day weekend for all the students. And lastly, the Osborne twenty twenty four yearbook is on sale for eighty dollars. You may order online or send your child to room ten thirty on the first floor, A wing of Osborne. More info is on the Osborne website. And our yearbook is featuring a literary magazine that my creative writing class is producing. So that should be fun to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bland. Mrs. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Bland. Get your yearbooks, get your yearbooks. I don't have a whole lot to add tonight. I don't have any comments really except for to share that today I was in Ms. Prentice's sixth grade class. I don't know if I was shadowing or I was supposed to be teaching as well. I did a little bit of both. It was an interesting day. She just had a baby, so I want to say congratulations to her. That was at Mayfield Intermediate. I've been here so long, I keep forgetting we have two intermediates. The interesting thing is we started out, she started out with language arts, which we had a little discussion tonight about. And the very first thing the students had to do was come in and read. They had to come in and read for about fifteen minutes. And she really observed the students to make sure they were reading. She asked questions. It was, it was very insightful. We also learned about the organizational patterns. I was able to help some students kind of think through, through some questions. So that was fun. Then she taught social studies and we learned about immigration, why people left Europe to come to America. So that was interesting as well. What was really interesting, it was pouring down rain all day and they had a fire drill. I thought, okay, do they know I'm here? It was pouring down rain. It was a real fire. It was not a fire drill. The fire trucks came and so we were all, we were all soaking wet going outside. And so we were all, we were all soaking wet going outside. It was just a, it was just a sensor. Mayfield. It was just a sensor. So they had to correct that issue. But to see the, the organization of all the students go out into the parking lot in the pouring rain, there was a little complaining, but not too much. I was very impressed by my experience today. And with that, I am, that's all I've got, Ms. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks.
Thank you. I did neglect to say thank you to the, everyone who worked on this compensation plan and who does continue to work because I know that you will continue to try and find ways that we can continue to increase everyone's compensation. I've also wanted to say Happy New Year, welcome back, and congratulations to everyone who is in the spotlight tonight. Very, very good job. And with that, I'll say thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Spall, you're up next.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Mr. Stevens and Ms. Lane and their stellar band and art students who were honored tonight. Two of my favorites from the past, all the Apple and Pear Award winners, the Super Sub Award winners. It was a very nice ceremony, and I'm really pleased with all the people that were honored and thank them for their hard work. I would also like to say, I don't know, I lost all my notes. All employees are educators, and I'm very excited about, even though our, our resources are limited, I'm optimistic about the upcoming budget season. And I think that, you know, some of the meetings that are coming up between school board and council are going to be hugely necessary. And I'm, I'm appreciative that we're going to have an opportunity to work through some of our differences. I dearly hope that the vote tonight is a bridge to new funding options. And I think I'm right, Ms. Bland, we need to get those grades in for the end of semester on Friday, right? Okay, so good luck to everybody Friday.
Thursday, actually.
Thursday. Don't do Friday. Yes, everyone's off Friday. Not everyone. Students are off on Friday. So happy teacher work day. Get your work in by Thursday. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work this semester.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Mr. Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to congratulate all the Apple and Pear Award winners and everyone who was recognized today. Again, thank you to the staff for all your hard work. It doesn't go unrecognized. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Brezha.
Thank you. I've already told my fellow school board members a version of this story at one of our work sessions, but I want to highlight it here tonight for my comments. Yeah, this is our first meeting of twenty-twenty-four. Happy New Year, everybody. And during the holiday season, I was putting together notes of gratitude, little, you know, little chocolates and little gifts and cards for, what started out was my child's teacher. And then I realized, oh, it's not just my, my child's classroom also has an IA. I've got to include the IA. And my child, this, my child is a special, a special ed child. She has a special ed team. Well, of course, I've got to include each of them. Oh, and she always comes home talking about how much she loves art class and music class and gym class and library. And before I knew it, before I knew it, I had fifteen cards, which had started as an exercise in gratitude just to thank a teacher. And it really, it really blew me away, honestly, how much goes into just one kid. Wait, we're talking just one child in the Manassas City Public Schools. And how many people from all sorts of backgrounds, performing all sorts of jobs, contribute to that success. And I want to take my first comments of the year to extend my gratitude, not just to the fifteen people at Baldwin Elementary that got cards from me, but to every single person in our division who are working hard every day for kids just like mine. And I know that together we will work forward to, you know, move forward together to make sure that everybody feels that appreciation. And, you know, I look forward to the next steps that all of us will be taking, you know, this next budget season. I have high hopes for it as well. So thank you to my fellow school board members for a very thorough engagement on our recent topics. And thank you to everybody in the Manassas City schools for what you do every day.
Thank you, Mrs. Brezha. Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. I really appreciated being able to be one of the school board members down, thanking everyone who won the Apple and Pear Awards and the sub awards. And when I saw Ms. Reggie Moore, I was surprised because she was the long-term sub for my twenty-one-year-old's ninth-grade English class. And there she was again, and she hasn't changed. And to have that kind of commitment and to be someone who's been with us since nineteen seventy-seven, that's pretty amazing, and that's pretty wild. So thank you, Ms. Moore, for your long-term dedication to us. It's really been a wonderful thing. Monday, we celebrate Martin Luther King Junior's birthday, so I did want to share this quote because I think it's quite appropriate for all the hard work everyone has put in, from my fellow members of the board to the central office staff, to the superintendent's cabinet. And it says, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." At times, the compensation discussion has been a challenge, and finding the right path forward has been difficult. And making the decision that works best for everyone has been hard. And I appreciate the work everyone has done, the decisions everyone has made, and the vulnerability we've all shown in really talking about where we stand and how we feel. But the conversation isn't over. Thursday night at five-thirty, we have a budget work session, and one of the parts of the discussion will be compensation moving forward. Because, and I have to look at my calendar real quick because I forgot. Thank you. Nope. The Compensation Committee is meeting again on January seventeenth at five PM at Central Office. And we're going to move the discussion on to long-term plans towards compensation. And it's narrowing the gap between our school divisions and surrounding school divisions for teacher pay. That doesn't mean that we won't ever look at support staff or administrative staff because, as we have all said, and I think almost everyone on this diocese said, all of our employees are educators. And Ms. Brezha pointed out exactly what that looks like in a school building. How many people touch the lives of our children? And when we look at the Apple and Pear Award winners and the sub award winners, how many people play a role in raising our children? Because our schools do raise our children. They're in school longer every day than they are at home, than they are with us, their parents. So thank you to everyone for everything you do. Have a wonderful rest of your January evening. Try to stay dry. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. I too want to talk about Reggie Moore. It was nice to see a familiar face in the audience again, and she keeps coming back. And she loves the kids, and she's in it for the right reasons, and it was great to honor her tonight. Thank you, Reggie. Today is also Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Thank you to all our law enforcement officers in the city of Manassas, especially our school resource officers, not only for keeping us safe, but keeping us informed with like our E three series. There's another one coming up soon. I'd like to thank my fellow school board members for your confidence in me on our organizational meeting on January second. I was elected to serve as chair again this year. Tonight's vote was on teachers because it's what, it's what the council is ready to support at this time. And I just want to say that the school board is committed to continuing conversations with council to seek adequate funding for all Manassas City Public Schools employees. Thanks to all the staff for being here tonight, for supporting us and preparing us to make a decision, an informed decision. Thank you very much. And that's all I have tonight. Dr. Newman, you want to say anything?
Chair, I moved that the school board meeting adjourned.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Williams. That the school board meeting adjourned. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned.